No, but he's fourteen.
He's fifteen.
Oh, so what, what age did he play in years? What game, what was his kid?
They moved him up to freshman, he's an eighth grader. So he moved up to freshman.
No, but I mean for that first, for that first.
It was fourteen, Eli was like, that was thirteen. Eli is thirteen, no one is fifteen.
Andy, how you doing?
I'm well, and you?
He was in double A.
Uh, not complete, but this is a thank you note for some little girl for us not holding the swimming pool.
Oh, it is very cute.
Kinda cool.
So, did you get my couple emails with extras?
Yes.
Okay, so the SRO is there, there are no changes in that contract, that's just a re-.
Okay.
And then the payout for the one point nine million is in there. This is an email from, um, Jack, and he's like, um, he wasn't sure, so we, she asked him over that, that was me.
Okay.
And, um, this is your, it's your time for any questions on any thing.
Just in general?
Yeah, you can, if there's any, sort of, diamonds come from me, she is here today.
Sure, okay.
Um, she, she's gonna just talk about another item with the school. So she's here, if there are any questions on this sprinkler, right?
Okay.
Three times for years on these.
Three times.
Oh.
Anyone speak for, no, just, that one, you see the motion?
Okay.
Yep. Just the motion.
Andy, sorry, came in now, super spry.
Yep, yep, I got it all.
How about this?
It's good now, your advice should have it. Yep, it's okay, yep. Yep. So, good for everybody, should be good with the email.
I think we have more needed. Maybe a motion person, yes.
Motion, after the public hearing for like, our motion just put it back.
Did you guys catch any fish?
We did, did very well, yeah.
I was gonna ask you on Memorial, you forgot about it.
Yeah, yeah, no, because we're good, we, uh, got our fish with, we did not try very hard for all eyes, we were strictly laid out. The other guys tried some, and the guys we wanted to get in contact with, we talked for a few moments when we got there, and we thought they were gonna be there another day, so we, because they've been catching them, we couldn't keep any, because they weren't, weren't slotting it. But they were, yeah, they were here, we, we knew where they were at, but wasn't sure how, what they were doing to get them, whatever. But they left, uh, while we were out fishing, they had already returned home, so we never really got to talk.
All right, it's five thirty, a call is meeting order, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag, United States of America, a true republic, which is having one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? All four say aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all four say aye.
Aye.
Against? All right. Mayor's comment, an open forum. Um, if you're here to talk about the sprinkler, um, you'll have your chance when we get to that part, otherwise, is there anyone else here that would like to speak now? Go on, come up, please, and state your name and address.
Yeah, my name is Dave Campbell, uh, I'm here representing Winterfest two thousand twenty-three. Generally, Louisa Greenstock, uh, has been our spokesperson, but she's a little under the weather tonight. My address is two thirty North Fourth Avenue here. Uh, we have a couple of updates and things for your consideration, whether or not, uh, possibility of the middle of the month meeting that you may have, or into, uh, July, we'd like to, to get some final, uh, decisions made. Uh, most particularly, the date, we had started off as a three-day hoped-for event. We've scaled that down to a one-day event with a, uh, uh, little blurb from the mayor, uh, talking about the beginning of a Winterfest tradition, as well as the possibility of, uh, some other remarks, because our date that we would like to have it this year is Thursday, December seventh, at six P M. And, uh, if the mayor wants to, uh, mention all our servicemen, uh, in regards to it being Pearl Harbor Day, that would be fantastic. Uh, we also want to have a tree lighting, and that be, is and remains, uh, our largest, uh, issue of planning. We had thought, uh, about having a tree cut and delivered, and having it be a, a monument sort of, probably, uh, well outside our ability to, to make this work, Rockefeller Plaza type, type thing, but it, it seems like as we've thought more and more about it, and in consultation with Jan from Jan's Tree, uh, uh, and Christmas store down, uh, just south of Duellum, we've decided that it might be best if we have a live tree, uh, this first year, and have it sustainable, so we're not constantly coming to folks for fundraising for a tree. If we could find a place down there at the, uh, far end of Fourth Avenue, down past the American Legion in that parking lot, or one of the, uh, joining green space areas or grassy areas, to plant, uh, say, a sixteen-to-twenty-foot tree this first year, and watch it grow with the festival, is something that I think would be, uh, very wise and prudent. Uh, so, think about, uh, whether or not you have a spot in mind. There's a few places, and if I may, down in this area, at the end of Fourth Avenue, it is a parking lot, but it is, uh, light industrial district, but mainly parking area, but with some grassy areas around. We did originally, at the beginning, want it to be visible down Fourth Avenue, but that's just not gonna be feasible. The city will probably not allow us to go into a tarmac sort of area to plant that tree. I mean, uh, gotta have parking, I guess. So, please consider that, and, uh, to, uh, rubber stamp our date of December seventh. Uh, I have talked to Jody Martenson at the high school, and she will be able to come up with, uh, some members of the community, uh, uh, coral group, as well as some, uh, students who want a little extra credit points for joining in in the evening, plus maybe a, a church group that can help with carols, uh, just a little, uh, hot chocolate or cider, and make it a rather, uh, uh, moderate and reasonable festival this first year. So, uh, any questions? Mainly about the tree, I'm suspecting.
I'm assuming we're gonna have to have power coming from some source or another.
Yeah, there's the options of, you know, a cord or into a, a pole standard, or even with a smaller tree like that, uh, the possibility of, uh, fundraising and getting, uh, a solar panel that can illuminate that tree. Uh, all that kinda out in front. Uh, we hope during Foley days, in front of, uh, Louisa Greenstock's Changes Gallery, to have a table with a banner on the front of the table for fundraising and, uh, aware, raising awareness of, uh, Winterfest, and fundraising for the, uh, purchase of the tree and any other incidental costs that we have this year.
Mark, we have anything nearby for power?
Getting it around that parking lot down there.
I don't think on that side we do.
Get together, take a look at what you got somewhere.
North Main Street.
Alright.
Anybody else have any questions? We will come up with some answers for you, how would that be?
Come up with what?
I'll come up with some answers for you as far as location, what time.
Uh, should we just plan on coming and getting ourselves on the July agenda?
Yes.
Okay.
On the July, yes.
Okay.
Good.
Thank you.
That's what we'll do, any other questions? Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else, we're open forum right now.
Deborah Olson at six hundred Dewey Street. Um, with the government's, um, passing of the different bills, um, to me, it sounded like conflicting information about the bonding bill. Has anybody heard anymore about that? I believe Mrs. Brun will talk about it later, I hope.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else for open forum? All right. Wastewater, uh, reason, the regionalization, Jared Volgy.
Well, good evening, Mayor Council, enclosed in your packets this evening is pay estimate number nine for the wastewater improvements project. Uh, there's been multiple crews working in town. Um, this pay estimate is in the amount of one million nine hundred seventy-four thousand two hundred sixty dollars and forty cents. Represents approximately sixty-seven percent of the, of the project, um, completion. The vast majority of the force main has been installed, the lift stations grading, uh, lots of cleanup to do. Uh, so if you happen to get calls on that, the contractors well aware of that, we had a, uh, monthly meeting today, and, uh, did a little bit of a tour to identify the items that they need to take care of. So, uh, we are recommending a approval of the pay estimate, uh, to Geislinger and Sons in the amount of one million nine hundred seventy-four thousand two hundred sixty dollars and forty cents. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that council might have.
Do they have a completion date?
Um, it's dependent on when the generators and transformers get here, so we're still struggling with those items. Uh, most recently, some check valves too, so, um, certainly keep council updated on that as we have a realistic timeline.
How much more, excuse me, how much more, uh, pipe needs to be put into the ground?
Well, currently, they're working east of the main lift, um, in terms of feet, I guess I'm not exactly sure.
Well, that means it pretty much just, they're fifty and then the jog to Mockingbird?
Uh, yeah, let me see, they're going down the, they're moving east from the main lift.
Yeah.
But they do have some tie-ins and stuff that they've been working on where the directional drilling comes, they gotta tie that, those pipes together too, so.
And then I was asked by the township, are they gonna reshape that one road that got pretty beat up when they put the material on it?
Absolutely.
Okay, is that our cost, or that Geislinger's?
Uh, there is some, in anticipation of some of the pipe being close to the edge of the road, there's material in the contract for, for repairs, but anything that they do outside of the, the contract is their responsibility, so.
Okay. When do we look at the, uh, order station?
Uh, it's my understanding that all approvals should be in place approximately June thirteenth, so.
Anyone else have questions?
Uh, when you mentioned cleanup, I'm assuming that's taking care of those that kind of been complaining about a few things on the private properties?
Yeah, there's some restoration issues that definitely, uh, need to be addressed, for sure, yep.
Appreciate that.
Yep.
Any other questions? If not, I entertain a motion for pay application number nine.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any further discussion? If not, all four say aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried.
Thanks, Council.
Thank you, Jared.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Would it be okay now to talk about the bonding, just?
Yeah, we can throw it out there.
Okay, um, we have good attendance here today, so, um, the bonding bill that the governor did sign on Thursday does include, uh, eighty million for the Point Source Implementation Grant, which does qualify us for funding. Um, we have spoken with our PFA contacts, and what we are doing is we are waiting now for PFA to receive the funding from the state. The state has to go out and issue those bonds, and then refund all those programs within their internal departments. When that is in place, we will then be issued an agreement with the PFA for the P-SIG money, and then the mayor and I will sign and execute that agreement, and then be eligible for reimbursement. The timing of this pay app was, uh, critical for that. We, um, waited to install or approve this pay app until after the governor signed the bill, because that, therefore, it makes it eligible for reimbursement with these funds. So we're working closely with the state, um, I won't feel the best until it's in our hands and done, but, um, things are looking very good. So, um, we're trying to speed up the process by authorizing the mayor and I to sign that agreement immediately, as soon as it becomes available, um, and we anticipate that to happen in about July. So, does that answer your question too? Yeah, so good news, um, it appears that the funding came through.
Friday of session, it did not look good. Saturday of session, it looked much better.
We had a rough couple weeks, I will, the council, and, yes, it was a scary couple weeks, but we got her done.
Thank you. Uh, number seven, Jennifer Seamers, request road closure.
Hi, Jennifer Seamers, um, sixty-nine Lone Ridge Lane, Foley. Um, my husband and I kind of spearhead the Foley Fund Days Car Show, the Saint, at Saint John's Church Parking Lot, the Heavenly Hot Rod Show. And I'm requesting, we, I came last year and requested it, and I'm requesting the same, that, um, we close Seventh Avenue from Dewey Street to John Street. The car show runs from approximately five to eight, a lot of times, people get there early. So if we could close it a little bit before, like, I don't know, say, three o'clock, I'll have Brian talk to Mark if, if this goes through. Um, and anticipation, hopefully, we'll have a lot of cars, it all depends on the weather. So if we don't need that space, we won't use it, but we'll have it if it's a great turnout.
I'll make motion.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any, any further discussion on this? If not, all four say aye.
Aye.
Against?
Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Uh, we're not gonna have a public hearing on liquor license renewals, do I have to read through all these?
No.
No?
We're on the agenda.
Thank you. Is there anyone here to speak for or against these liquor license and temporary liquor license? Is there anyone here to speak for or against these liquor license? Is there anyone here to speak for or against these liquor license? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve this, uh, listed liquor license and renewals.
Mr. Mayor, would you please close the public hearing first?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm not closing the public hearing.
I'll make the motion to approve the liquor license renewals.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any further discussion? If not, all four say aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. I would now entertain a motion to approve the tobacco licenses for the said retailers on your list.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion on these tobacco licenses?
Has Casey's handled their little issue they had with the, um, problem with sewing?
Has there been any other?
Have they had any more?
Instances? Chief?
With Casey's, we have not done another compliance check, we do those once a year. Um, and so when we do another one, we'll know if they are following the rules or not, so. But as of now, we have had, received no complaints.
I think she was asking if they paid their fine.
Oh, yes, yeah, the fine has all been paid.
Well, between the fine and if they're still doing it.
Yep.
Yeah. Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Any other for discussion? All right, motions have been seconded, all four say aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. Public hearing, consider renewal of sprinkler sewer charges. So, I'm gonna open this up to the public right off the start, and come up, state your name, address, and what you'd like to say about it, and then we'll go on from there. So whoever likes to go first?
Uh, is this on? It is. Bruce Thompson, one-one-three-three Gulf Court, um, again, thank you for considering this. Um, I've read through it, and, and from what I can see, I, I think it will be, uh, good for a lot of the residents that do have the sprinkler systems. From my understanding, it is, uh, to purchase the water meter and have it installed, um, pay all twelve months on that water meter, even when not using it. Um, and I think at the current rate, is it about sixteen twenty-five, the minimum, it would be for those months not used? So, um, again, I think that would, to me, that would be agreeable. Um, and I wish you would really consider, um, moving forward on it. Um, it, it is a little bit of a hardship with these sewer charges, the way they're going, and we, we all know we're not using all those extra gallons, uh, down a sewer. So, uh, again, thank you, and, and, uh, we'll wait for your vote.
Thanks, Bruce. There we go.
My name is Kristen Peterson, and this is my husband Sam, we live on one ninety Gopher Avenue, Foley. We bought our first home in this community three years ago, in August of two thousand twenty, when we had the rare opportunity to purchase a new construction house in town. We were attracted to Foley because it's a small rural community that we felt would be a nice place to start our family. As well as living here in Foley, we both work in Foley as a teacher and a mechanic, and have also become involved in other community organizations. We believe in supporting our town through our time and talents. However, we also believe that our town needs to support its citizens as well. On this front, we are beginning to feel discouraged. Since moving here three years ago, our water and sewer rates when charged the minimum have doubled from approximately ninety-six dollars quarterly to sixty-six dollars monthly. Three-fourths of this monthly bill are sewage fees. While we understand the rate increase in order to fund the sewer expansion project, we are disheartened by the unfair method of charging for sewage based on water usage specifically during the summer months. Last summer, we wanted to work on some landscaping projects, which included laying sod in the backyard. Because we needed to water the lawn so frequently, it quickly became apparent just how disproportionate the sewer fees have become. We were disgusted that we were being charged such high rates for sewage on water that never went into the sewer. While we understand nothing can be done about the situation in the past, we felt compelled to speak to you today with the hope that you will hear the perspective of a new family in the community. With one of the major goals of the current sewer expansion project being residential development, we want to make you aware of the impact that the water and sewer rates are having on new community members. We know how frustrating it is firsthand to be charged several hundreds of dollars for sewage services we didn't utilize, and we implore you to change city policies regarding sewer rates for outdoor water usage, such as watering lawns and gardens, filling pools, washing cars, et cetera. We feel that the ordinance currently being proposed for in-ground sprinkler systems does not adequately address our concern. The high startup costs associated with purchasing and installing in-ground sprinkler system, purchasing, installing, and setting up the new water meters required, and being charged minimum rates for the entire year, do not make this a viable option for many citizens of this town, including our household. We would like the city council to explore other alternatives to ensure fair sewer billing for the citizens of Foley. One such alternative would be to average a household's sewage during the winter months, and charge the household this average rate for the entire year. This method of billing would eliminate the high startup costs of the proposed ordinance for community members. We appreciate the opportunity to have our voices heard tonight, and we ask you to work together with your community to develop a more just system for sewer billing. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam, thank you, Kristen.
I'm Deb Wilson at six hundred Dewey Street. And I understand and appreciate that household and property owners prefer not to pay the attached sewer rate to water their yard in regards to the new, uh, sprinkler system that they would like. But at the same sentiments, it holds true that myself and many others who have a garden, whether for flowers, vegetables, do not want to pay the additional sewer charge. Either way, the water typically leaches back into the soil and not into the sewer system. And not like the sub-pump systems with the end of the hose almost to the end of the street, where they aren't being charged water rates, but the water goes into our storm sewer system. So we aren't collecting any payment from that. And the long and the short of it, a great deal of our property owners and residents do not even come close to using the minimum amount of water which we have to pay for. And so if the city starts giving special discounts for one, they should also look at giving special discounts to those of us who do not use the minimum amount of water that we're charged for, and subsequently, the sewer rate that's attached to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Deb.
Hi, I'm Larry Netto, reside at one sixty-one Fourth Avenue South. Had a underground sprinkler system for, I don't know, twenty-some years. Came to the council years ago and kinda walked away frustrated from that point until now, because I always felt like it was being, there was some kind of a punitive thing with this water usage. I take pride in maintaining a well-maintained residence and commercial building in our town, which I think is what we want. I mean, do we not? I hear the council talk a lot about, oh, problems with trailers in yards, and what's a driveway and what isn't, and weeds, and all that stuff, and, and yet, it always felt to me like the people that made the investment work hard at keeping a nice property so our community looks nice, while we're getting penalized with this sewage usage fee when we, when we water, when we use that water. And so, I read the proposed ordinance, and I just wanna say that I think it goes a, a long way to getting some satisfaction, and maybe putting some common sense into things in terms of that water usage in the sprinklers. And I just hope you're gonna support this, this ordinance moving forward, and it's something that I can live with and feel a lot better about things compared to how they've been. Um, trying to think, let's see, did I make any notes? There was more than I wanted to say, uh, but, no, I think it's fair, Bruce detailed some of the costs, and, and I have no problem paying help and pay for that infrastructure, the meter, and the, 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 uh, minimum fees during the winter. And I realize there's different ways of doing it, the previous speaker talked about averaging things over the winter, and, I don't know, maybe it's a work in progress, we gotta start somewhere, otherwise, we get caught up in what-ifs, and, and, uh, looking at complex situations, and maybe analyzing everything for months and months, and never seem to move forward with some progress on this, and, so, I just wanna encourage you to, let's, let's at least get to first base with this thing and see how it works, and have some faith in the people that are gonna do it and try it out, and go from there, so. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Larry.
Shawna Winter, eleven oh nine Gulf Court, and I agree with a lot of the comments that were made today. I can see multiple different angles or options for this. I agree, I also moved the area five, six years ago now, invested in the sprinkler irrigation system, and now it's getting to the point where I don't know if I can afford it. I'm a single person, live alone, don't have the extra help, enjoy a nice yard, a garden, flowers, everything else that goes along with the Minnesota summer. Um, I would greatly appreciate, I don't know if we have the answer tonight, or the right way, but I agree, I think getting something in motion to start. something in motion to start is a step in the right direction. That's what I've got to say.
Thank you, Shawna.
Mayor, Council, Adriana Berny, six-twenty-one Norman Avenue. Last summer, we were definitely in favor of a separate irrigation meter, um, until I saw the proposed ordinance, updates, changes, whatever. I've worked for a couple different cities in my time, and that's not to say that I know what's best, or all of that, but I, I've seen a couple different options. I originally was the city clerk in Freeport. There, they did separate irrigation meters, worked out really well, not, not as big of a population as Foley, though. But there, yes, you were required to buy your own water meter, you had to have it installed by a plumber, the city inspected it, that worked out great. But we didn't impose minimum water usage rates during the winter months, so, originally, if water ran through that meter, you paid for it, if it didn't, you didn't pay for it, so in the winter months, you didn't have to pay for anything. That worked out really well, also, there you were able to tie in your outside water spigots all to that, so that alleviated some of the questions, I think, here tonight about filling up pools, watering gardens, washing your car, because that was all allowed to go through that separate water meter. Then, um, so, so that's the separate irrigation meter that I've had experience with, and then, in, now I work for Way Park. There, we don't allow separate irrigation meters for residents, but we do winter rates. It works really well for our city, I think it could work really, really well for Foley. I know recently, the city of Foley got the same software, utility billing software, and all of that, that Way Park has. So I know being able to calculate winter rates for individuals is an option. In Way Park, we bill quarterly, so that looks like, um, your sewer usage in this, or January, February, March, whatever that average is, is what you get billed for the rest of the year. So again, that would alleviate the questions of filling up swimming pools, and washing cars, and gardening, and all of that fun things that people like to do in the summer. I think that's a more viable option for residents and for Foley. Then staff doesn't have to worry about inspecting, you don't have to pull separate permits, shutting on and off water wouldn't have to be an issue. So, that's just some of my feelings, um, and the experiences that I have had in the past. Thank you.
Thank you, Adriana. Anyone else like to speak for or against the proposed sprinkler? I'm gonna go to Sarah right now, 'cause she gave us a Royalton's, and I need a little clarification on that, as far as what that rate would be, or how they do it. Or Monica could do it. Or Stacy. No one's shaking their head. Well, this was brought up after
Yeah.
we kinda laid this groundwork down.
Yeah, actually, um, we had, uh, Monica, our staff member, was at, uh, the Quirks Institute, and was, um, visiting with Royalton, and discussion on summer sewer rate, and what they do is they lock in, you sign up and you lock in, it's a higher rate, but it's, um, doesn't, then, you basically lock that higher rate in, it's in between the regular, but not as high as you'd be charged if you were metered for those specified months. Um, I think they do forty-four and fifty, forty-five and fifty-five, um, is what their, forty-five's their base rate, fifty-five is their summer sewer rate. But you have to sign up in advance, and you are charged that no matter if you use the water, or the sewer or not, it's, it's automatic, you can't back out halfway through, um, you basically commit yourself. For some people, it works out, if you do very little outside watering, you're better off just paying the standard sewer rate. So, we, we just came across this item, it eliminates that need for additional metering, plumbing, um, trying to simplify. The concern, you know, at the staff, what we had is what if we make all these changes, and something doesn't work out, and we need to change, we don't want people investing all those resources if, um, something needs to change in the future, so that was a concern in some of the feedback that we received. I think I included that, did I include the email in your packet too, from their clerk?
Yes.
Yeah. They've had good luck with it, um, they're smaller than us. Uh, the, the sewer rate, if we were to do it in Foley, it would not, it would be higher, is what we're thinking. Um, we've only just run some initial calculations, we didn't do a deep dive into it yet, um, we wanted to see if there was interest at the council level, and then we can really dive into the numbers, and I'd probably have Monica do a lot of that, just to, um, check things out. But essentially, you lock in a higher rate, um, for those summer months, you sign up with that simple form, you're committed. Works for, works for, you know, like irrigation, people that are higher users, maybe not for the real minimal watering flowers, few, like, outdoor items.
So, they get X amount of gallons?
Ten thousand, I believe.
Per month?
Yep.
Yes?
Correct. Yeah.
The minimum, the minimum would still be in, in effect, that no matter which way we go, there's still gonna be a minimum charge, I assume.
Yeah, we have to do a, a base rate of some kind.
No matter which way we go, if we go with the meter, or we go with the, the estimated, it's not gonna work for everybody.
No.
They're still gonna end up in, they're, if they think that everybody's gonna get a discount, they're not, and it doesn't matter if you got a meter, or if you go the estimate. But I truly believe that it will work for everybody, it may not make it pay, but going the estimated winter rate, not, and, and not including May, but just June, July, and August, with the minimum still in effect, not having any numbers, how that's gonna affect our sewer rate, I, I don't know that, but I'd be, be so much more in favor of that, for these people that wanted, they can go ahead and try it, but they may not save any money on it.
Yeah.
For some of the others. I know there's some people that the meter won't work because of their plumbing setup. It's gonna be quite costly to change that. So to make it easy for everybody, I would like to see the estimated come in, with the minimum still intact, because people are still, regardless of what they, they, they still would be paying the minimum.
Well, but, so what Royalton does is, an individual would have to sign up for it, for those
Correct.
three months.
Correct.
So for those three months, their bill's gonna go up to whatever the number is we decide, and then, they're gonna get extra gallons, of course.
It, it, it depends on how you wanna structure it, I mean, you, you're basically going to charge something above the minimum, but not, you know, we, we run it an average, I think the, the sampling we had, the average was about nine thousand per month, you know, so you're gonna have to put somewhere between twenty-five hundred and nine thousand gallons per month is probably what you'd be looking at. The council would have to decide that. Um, but you charge a little bit of additional, I think, to set you up on the program, and also, what you're using the water for, I think, you know, they, they use it as some justification that we are giving you a discount, but not a full.
Two notes, at irrigate on a timely basis, I think it would be a plus, but if you're looking at gardens, flowers, and cars, probably not gonna save anything.
That's probably very likely, yeah.
I just feel not having our citizens have to put in a meter, and the plumbing, and the changes, a better way to start is the Royalton method. And, let's see, everybody could be maybe happy with that. It just...
We were just trying to find, I am aware of the winter rates, um, we did that in Becker. The only concern I have with the winter rates is I don't know what kind of impact that's going to have, and right now, we are committed to rate increases with the PFA, I have to generate a certain amount of revenue. Remember, we passed that resolution, there's, that, that's why you saw those significant increases. I can't exactly, you know, see what that's going to do. Some of them are smaller upticks, some people use more, I can, you know, we can look at the big ones. It, it's likely to drive an overall increase to the rate. How big that is, you know, the base rate, how big that is, I can't say if you do winter rates. But it is a very simple way to do it, just understand that it's going, it could have an impact on the whole bottom line, because even though we, we don't charge the sprinklers that sewer rate, the overall system still needs to generate this much money to make the payments, and to make, um, you know, the operating expenses and so forth. And since we are in the middle of such a big project, I do have a little bit of uncertainty with how that's all gonna look like in the end after we connect.
Well, is this the time, then, to be making a major decision about this? I mean, I have a feeling it might not be the proper time. Do we have people using Sandpoint Wells that we have no way of knowing? If, they're not stealing water, but they're not paying water in sewer? So, is this the right time? And is there a stopgap measure of some kind? And the Royalton method seems like a stopgap for now.
Probably never gonna be a right time. Yeah, it is, it is bad with our sewer thing, but we're gonna have to try and make it work. Maybe we'll have to make some justification there in the rate policy, if, if, if it may be, we can't work on a minus.
Yeah. The, the, the five of you make that decision ultimately. I just want you to be aware, I can't give you all the specific answers at this time, we just have a lot of variables right now going on with our project. I mean, we just passed a pay-up, that change order, um, that was a five-hundred-thousand dollar change, you know, the last meeting, we, we don't, the project isn't complete, we still have some things that have to be done yet, um, that's gonna impact rates, you know, the final end result, until we're connected, there's still just a lot of things, um, a lot of uncertainties. And to do, to go too far might be, you know, of concern to some people.
If I could speak again, I challenge council maybe not to consider what, was it Royalton, or Rice is doing? You're imposing a flat rate on absolutely everybody that signs up for that, whether that household has ten people, or whether that household has one person. If you go that route, I think that's gonna hurt your sewer fund, more than going, taking the average of what that household is actually using. So if that household of ten is using a considerable amount of water in January or February, they're still gonna have to pay that same sewer rate in the summer months, where if you go to this other method, you're paying, well, for their example, just fifty-five dollars, that might not have been what they paid, that might be less than what they actually paid in those winter months, depending on the size of the household. So I just challenge you with that bit of information, that I don't necessarily agree that that is the method to go with either. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I believe that having a separate system, separate meter in the irrigation system is not fair for everybody that enjoys a nice lawn, a garden, flowers. I think everybody should be able to enjoy the niceties of their homes, and, but I do believe that we do pay too much, we shouldn't have to pay as much for those niceties in our community. I believe we have to find a happy medium somewhere. Royalton is an idea, Way Park seems to have a better idea. I think we, as a council, we have to find what is gonna work for us on this. I think we should not penalize our people anymore, for as much as we are for the sewer bill. I agree that the timing of this is not the right time, but we have to get the ball started somewhere. If we want to go forward with putting in a separate meter, then everybody should, if they want a meter in their house, it's their money, they're spending it, and we charge accordingly, because after all, we're all in this together. I like my garden, we have lots of plants that I have to water. I'm not sure yet, but I should say, as more plants get planted in my yard, I'm sure my bill is gonna go up, and I'm not gonna stop it. So I personally have to look at putting in that meter if it's gonna save me money, I think everybody will have to do that also, but I think a flat rate might be the way to go, in the winter months for sure, for the sewer. That, I don't know what the cost would be, we don't know yet, but I think we have to look at that.
Just to clarify, council, I just wanna make sure, what you do is you base your summer, you take your winter sewer, and that's what you use as your sewer for the summer.
Oh.
That's what you use, you lock in your sewer essentially, at your winter rate. So all that watering, like, it, it, your faucets, your
Right.
'cause you're not using your faucets, you're not watering flowers.
Right.
So that's what you do, you take your winter sewer, like what you normally use in your household, and then you lock that in in the summer months, so that it's, like, naturally avoiding all your outdoor activities.
But we could also charge that just a tad bit higher on an average.
Um, you, I mean, I, you could do whatever you, I want, I suppose, I
Right.
but that's what the winter rates is, you basically are acknowledging, we metered you here, this is what your household uses, we're gonna lock you in here.
Right.
Right.
And instead of having an increase, we could charge a little more on a winter rate?
I don't know if I've seen that before, but
Just something to pick up on.
we can look, yeah, I guess.
'Cause we don't wanna have to impose another huge increase if we don't have to.
Yeah.
But we also need to have the money to pay the bills.
Well, and, and, you know, that, the only concern I have is I don't know what
Right.
the magnitude of that is, or will be.
Right, we don't know.
I, I don't know. I understand the concept, and it is a really good concept. I just don't, with all the other changes we have, that's just
And there again, we're sitting on timing too, because the project isn't done yet, but...
I agree with you initially that we gotta do something now, I mean, we can't belabor this, and, uh, I, I think it'd work a lot easier going the estimated route rather than a meter, because if it doesn't work for these people, you got three hundred dollars invested, now you gotta dismantle that, and this other one, you can walk in and walk out of it, there's no extra cost. And I think either way, uh, there's not gonna, there's not gonna be a benefit for, for everybody, and they gotta realize that. And it's, uh, it, that's what it's gonna be, a meter's not gonna make any difference either, it's not gonna make a difference for some people.
I also believe
just depends upon their usage and their system.
I also believe, um, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Thompson, you've done a lot of plumbing, is there in ordinance, or is there a law that says you have to upgrade a plumbing in a house after, I mean, I live, my house is old, and have galvanized piping and stuff, so if I brought in a licensed plumber to do this job, what do you say, according to state state law, I have to upgrade this in order for him to do that?
I can't answer that.
Okay.
I can't answer it. I asked him what that would be, I mean, it depends on what funding you bring in, who's gonna, who mistakes and things that are not maybe approved now, but whether you would have to, you know, go and fix that, I doubt. But I, I can't say anything.
It's a gray area, as far as I know.
So, I got a question though. So this is a voluntary thing for the winter usage, they would sign up, or is it gonna go flat across the board for everybody?
Talking the Royalton example?
No.
Winter rate would be everybody.
Winter average.
Everybody across the board. That's typically how winter rates work.
Right.
So that's where the concern is, I just don't know what it's gonna look like.
We don't know the impact.
So it's not gonna be an individual signup?
Typically, that's not what I've seen, I, maybe some cities do it that way, when the city When the city, the cities that I've seen, it's usually they implement a winter rate and everybody gets the winter rate. It's just an automatic built into the system.
Right, so instead, instead of making the folks that have lawn irrigation and putting this in place and forcing them to go get a meter if they want to use lawn irrigation, you're making it fair for everybody by charging everybody this winter rate that they'll be charged over the summer. And whether they want to fill up a pool or water their lawn is up to them. They'll be charged their water usage as it would be. But their sewer usage would just be what their average is. So everybody could take advantage of the program, everybody could do it. It wouldn't be something you sign up for, it would just happen. And you'll be charged the water you use. And then we're eliminating the fact of needing a meter and plumbing and, and codes and whatever else. To me, that seems like the most logical option and the most fair for everybody. However, to Sarah's point, we don't know the financial impact that that will have. And considering the timing of everything, we know rates would likely go up regardless with everything happening. And everyone has to be able to accept that. But to keep it simple and easy, you charge the winter rate across the summer. Everyone waters their lawn or doesn't and fills up their pools or don't. And whatever they use for water, they will be charged for. And it will be assumed their sewer bill will be what it is over the winters.
Gotcha. Mark, you got a question?
So, couple comments. Been here a little while, like thirty-four years. I wanna go to Councilman Gondek. Just going to, just cause it's on my mind, going to a higher sewer rate in the summer. Some of my, our bigger industrial users use more water in the summer and winter for cooling, big machines in their buildings. And we would penalize our highest taxpayers, so just be cautious doing that. I just wanna bring that up. I was, years ago, I was totally against this. As the rates and all this, I've been for it more and more. I was for the meter thing, I've talked to several people in this room about it, and yeah, yeah, meter, meter. The more I think about it and throw stuff or not, Bruce, I mean, I'm thinking something simpler. For, it's gonna be a ma- uh, maintenance, you know, expensive for people to do it. It's gonna be, we'll keep him probably more work. You know, and turning these off and back on when somebody sells the house, yeah, they tell them we have a meter. What's it gonna, you know, how do we make the new people? So I'm starting to lean towards, I know Stock Rapids does winter rate. I don't know if they do January, February, March, or whatever the three months are they use. I was kinda leaning towards the Roylton thing, but I think maybe, I think we should look at something. I, I, I really believe in having nice yards and keeping this up. Last year I was down three point six million gallons. I know the revenue's important. Three point six million on the residential side I was down. That's three point six million of water revenue and sewer, you know, based on the rate. If I can get two point five of that back, two million of that back, I'm bringing, I'm at least getting something into my sewer fund to replenish that lost money. And I'm gonna get that money in my water fund also, so. Cause the driest year we had forever were three point six, so people obviously are cutting back. So I think getting some of it back would be worth it to the city, it's gonna pay off in the long run.
Yeah, I mean, they're still gonna have to pay for the water.
Right.
So those that were maybe hesitant to do something because of paying water and sewer, they might be more likely to do something because all they're having to do is pay for water. Uh, and it's, to me, if we wanted to do something sooner rather than later, we keep putting this off, summer's over. Uh, and then we're circling back again next year. An easy decision would be to move forward with charging winter rates, let it go, and we can reassess and reevaluate, uh, as we need to next year. And we'll know more next year, but we gotta make a decision. And an easy decision would be charge winter rates, let people water their lawns. They get charged water and they get charged the main, maintained sewer rate over the, from the winter.
Personally, winter rates is the only way I can vote yes right now.
Jonathan Brian, six two one Norman Avenue. I'm gonna just kinda speak real quickly just on the real estate side, that's what I do for my job, and so. I, I like the winter rates, Wade Park does them just because it's simpler, it does cost less, especially for new people moving to the area. If you're, you know, at the closing table, you know, you tell people how much water and sewer is in Foley, they get kind of like, do you have the headlights look? So you do, you don't wanna penalize people, especially, I, I know certain builders in the area here, once we start developing land and they find, if we don't do anything, we, if the still, the same policy is in effect, you're, they're, you're gonna have them coming in here and like ambush you at a meeting, talking about how expensive it is. The meter, I, I mean, I like the theory if all it is, is we're just, you just charge for what you use. You don't have any other additional fees. However, from a, a cost standpoint to the residents, I don't feel like residents should be punished for wanting to make their property look better. Again, we want people to drive through, we want them to see like, people are taking care of their stuff, they're taking pride of things. You go into some other small communities, you can see that. And I don't know if that's a reason in Foley why people don't take care of their stuff because it costs so much to water their lawns and take care of their gardens and their landscaping. So I would just caution and say, I know that it's not a perfect time to do it right now, just with everything going on. However, I don't think there's ever gonna be a perfect time. And if we don't do it now, when builders start inquiring with Sarah, like, hey, what, what, how can we develop? What are the costs gonna be if they're gonna see that, hey, they have to put, you know, sod front yard, two trees on the boulevard, and they have to pay, if they have to water that three times a day, they get that first bill and they're gonna be like, oh my God, is it even worth, worth me trying to put a house up here? I know that sounds like a very small cost and everything, but that adds up very, very quickly for everybody. So I like the winter rates, I think, I think sometimes we overcomplicate very simple things. I think doing the Wade Park method is a very simple way of doing it. That way, you're still collecting the sewer throughout the year by all the residents, the people that wanna make their properties look nicer, water their yards. It, it doesn't add an extra burden of cost onto them. So sorry to kinda get out of line here, and I just wanted to interject on that point, so, thanks.
Thank you, John. Would we?
Can I ask you, or can I ask, what month does Wade Park use that, John? That's what Stock Rapids does, so, okay, I was just curious, so, thank you.
So, would we have to have another public hearing?
So your ordinance is not written that we posted, um, and
With the, with the sewer, or the winter rates.
With winter rates would be a fee schedule, wouldn't it? Yeah, fee schedule amendment, which would be a public hearing, yeah. So we would have to post a public hearing, have that and adopt an ordinance.
And for us to try and do winter rates right now, we're, we don't really know the answer to that, correct?
Well,
Cause I mean, we could, we could approve something right now, and if everyone's water bill doubles tomorrow, we're gonna have a, get a bigger place next month.
The, the concern I have is, uh, going backwards in the utility billing syst- you know, I, we're, right now, we're in the middle of working with Banyan and then we're transitioning. I'm concerned about that, I'm also concerned about doing it mid-budget cycle, you know? We also, we are committed to raising enough revenues with PFA. I, I have to find a way to average and, and look at these accounts to figure out how we're gonna generate this revenue because we have to generate that revenue or we're in violation of our loan agreement. I think it would be very difficult. I think it's probably the smartest thing to work towards implementation at the first of the year through a budget cycle. Uh, cause we need to give it some thought. I also think that gives staff some time to transition to the new system and set things up. But you know, it's ultimately up to you.
All right. Is there any more discussion on this matter?
Uh, what's the feasibility of you and your staff being able to go back and find winter rates and implement something in a timely fashion? I mean, if it's, if it's, if it, if your manpower limits you to doing it in two months, well then, we're at the moot point.
Let's just progress, we're barely getting water bills out right now because the pool opening up, um, less than registration. I mean, it's, it's the busiest time of year for us. It, it would take at least a few months to get that up and running. And I can't even say, I, I, you know, I can't even say exactly how we would pick that out right now because we don't have that set up. I know we can do it somehow, but I don't know how we would pick it out right now. And it's also, we're on a monthly cycle, so you'd have to pick something else now that, we don't do quarterly billing. So you'd have to pick either averaging multiple months. I don't know exactly how that formula would work.
Is it possible that we could work with these guys that your irrigation system is in now? At least impose something for these people that are losing, using a lot of water?
I, I don't know if the, legal might have, I don't know if you have any concerns about that. I, I worry about picking a group and
All right. This was my idea. So, to simplify this, I'm gonna make a motion to approve ordinance number four seventy-five. Can I get a second?
Mr. Mayor, before we go to that, can you close the public hearing?
Oh, I'm sorry. Anyone else to speak on the public hearing? If not, this public hearing is closed. I'm sorry.
I just have one more thing. I understand that January first would probably be way better for staff and I can, I can agree to that. And I think a lot of residents might be okay with that too, as long as we knew that was what was going to be implemented January first, twenty twenty-four. Yes, we can get through the next how many months and we'll all be okay. Maybe we won't water our grass so much. But if we knew that this is the system that was gonna hit January one, I think we can all agree with that. Thank you.
That's what I was gonna say, I mean, I, I think a decision can still be made. I understand logistically and, and things of that nature and the timing is, is maybe not best. Here we are already in summer. But a decision should be able to be made based off of what we want to do. And we just may not be able to implement it officially and the right way until next year.
Good.
I guess my question is, how do you feel about that?
Well, it's, it, you know, we started this last year.
Yeah.
And we went how many meetings last year, and again, we started this year, and it's, it's gonna go on again. I mean, it, it is, it is progress. And, and I guess, uh, council over here said about, you know, making things fair, you know, not just us, but everybody in that, but, you know, it kinda goes back to, again, the, what we pay going through our meter, I've said it before, for water and sewer. And then you go to the fire hall, that's a meter out there. Yeah, you're paying a little bit more for water, but they're not paying that sewer. So, you know, it, it's still not fair. We're not, you know, we're still paying sewer on water that we're not going down the sewer. So that's my, that's my argument.
Are you okay with not having it metered and, and us going the other route?
I can put my own meter in, and so to me, it, it's not a big deal, three hundred bucks. I'd save that one month, I mean, you know, if I was able to do it tomorrow. So, to me, that, that was fine and that extra six months was fine because that was a hundred dollars again. I, I, for me, it was fine. This other method, it's fine too. It's just it, it delays it, you know, definitely for this summer. So, yeah, if you're gonna move forward with it and go with the winter billing, um, that's fine. You know, I know your accounts are separate, water and sewer, so us kinda been subsidizing this sewer account by paying for it, you know, you, you need to get your water paid for in this account, your sewer paid for in this account. So if it, you know, if you gotta raise sewer rates for everybody, gotta raise sewer rates for everybody. Then it's fair, you know, then it's fair for everybody. That's all I get.
Yeah, I, I mean, I would, I would like to see something, a decision made versus us continuing to put it off. Uh, there's no reason why a decision can't be made, even if it means it's implemented January one.
And I have to agree with Bruce, we've been messing with this for a year and a half or so. And, and, and we haven't been able to come to any conclusions. And I, I, I just feel that we should be able to do something now for them. I'm paying for water and sewer that I don't use. I'm not complaining, I'm glad, I'm happy I have it. But I'm paying for water and sewer that I'm not even using. And, and so I, I guess fairness sometimes gotta be overlooked here, I'm sorry, legal or not.
I just wanna echo those sentiments that let's make a decision. If it's January first, so be it. In the end, I think, I mean, there might be some pain for a little bit trying to figure this stuff out. It probably, like Bruce was saying, helps separate these accounts, we actually have real data that we know how much sewer is being used or we get a little closer and how much water is being used and charge accordingly. Stop having one subsidize the other. The fire hall or wherever else, are those people not paying a premium? Yeah, I mean, well, they should be, I mean, like lots higher. Is my, my opinion on that, so. Thank you again for taking it up, and just, either way is fine, it may make a decision.
Yeah. Decision should be made.
All right, I had made a motion, I'm gonna rescind that motion because I know it's not gonna go anywhere with the sprinklers. So, with that said, do we get, do we need a motion to, to do winter billing? Or do we need to come up with our numbers?
So, at this point, we can provide staff with very clear direction on what you want. We will prep that. And we will also run those items through the budget cycle, which will be starting here in the next month or two. So we can work with those numbers as we prepare the budget, um, moving forward. The council will have to address a public hearing and, um, fee schedule through the budget cycle too, so we could work it in there if you'd like. Otherwise, if you, you wanna come through with it sooner, we can also do that. But we have to go through that process anyway with the budget.
But I'd like to re- yeah, you iterate that it'll only be for three months, June, July, and August. Some people have made June, July, and August. I don't think that's necessary, June, July, and August.
Two different things we're looking at here.
Two different things, yeah.
Wait a minute.
You're looking at using a winter monthly, month or monthly average to determine your sewer rate, uh, in the summer month, throughout the year.
So it doesn't matter?
It's not a signup, it's not a, you, you will lock in that sewer rate then. It, it will essentially be fixed throughout the, the months that when you sprinkle, so you will not change. It's a different program.
I just thought it should be set for those three months that they're gonna be using more water.
Well, and we can have further discussion on if you wanna make changes, but typically winter you
They can start it anytime, but when it stops, it stops in August. You go back to the regular water rate.
I think what we should do is maybe staff should prepare, maybe prepare some language for that, for you to see, that maybe that would be helpful to see how the winter rates work. Would that be a better way to proceed?
Every year is different. I mean, this year, we didn't have April.
Right.
And we didn't have May, and now it's a hundred degrees every day. So I mean, you weren't watering in April or May.
Exactly, but that's a gamble you take.
Correct. That's why, that's why
You gotta set something.
Okay.
I think, I think this year's abnormal.
Maybe what would be best is if council would provide direction to staff that we come back with a win- winter rate sample ordinance to review or fee schedule. We can, we can bring that back for you and lay that out for you so you can see exactly what that means. He did close it, didn't he? Oh, he didn't, okay. Sorry.
Is anyone else to speak on the public hearing? I did close it once, but then we opened it again. So the public hearing is closed. Does any council wanna make a motion or, uh, advice, I guess, or is it motion?
Directions fine, at this point.
I make the direction that we instruct our administration to come up with a winter rate that can be charged all year long. And with that, um, then the water bill will be charged accordingly to the usage. Correct?
You, you keep water at usage, yes. Do not lock in water.
Correct? We have to have a consensus, we don't need a motion right now.
No, would it, would it be the average winter rate for the entire year or only during the summer months?
You can do it for the entire year, if you want. But you, you do not wanna do an average for water, water should be based on usage, that's what I
Sewer, yeah. We, we need a number.
Yep.
But you need to, you need But you need to, you need a ordinance to tell you how you come to that locked-in sewer rate and then where you're going to administer that locked-in sewer, whether it's three months, whether it's one month, we have to make that decision.
Based on three months, say, January, February, March?
Well, some people, some places bill quarterly, so it's really easy for them to do first quarter. We use first quarter. I can pull some samples.
We need some samples.
Yep, yeah, and how you wanna do that, but yes, well, and, and I'll also have to do some checking into what the software can do to see what's the best option for us.
But is it, is it, what best option though is, as far as practice goes, to charge either during, just the average during the summer months versus the average for the entire year?
I think I've seen it mostly where it's the entire year you lock it in. But it's possible some people do it differently, I don't, I don't know. I've only seen a couple of samples.
I think that those are numbers that we're gonna have to look at. We keep talking summer months, how many months are we talking here? I mean, do you water a lot in September?
But half the way, you know, we keep it going.
Normally, I mean, normally June, July, August are your three heavy months.
But the idea is, nobody is watering, nobody is watering in January.
I'm just looking at compensating our sewage here somehow.
Well, that, that's the risk, that is, that's the change.
You wanna have it May to October, that's fine, but I think there should be some determination there, how many months you wanna have this.
Well, we don't know what it is Gary yet, until we, at least we get some numbers.
We would need the data, we would need the data for what it would look like imposing a winter rate the entire year or winter rate during just the summer.
Both cities I've read on are May, June, July, and August.
I think you're using two different programs. Two different programs here. The winter rate, the reason you pick January or February, nobody runs their outside hose or spigot. You lock it in, it is, it is just considering household. It is not considering any outdoor activities. So, you can lock that in because anything beyond that, what they're saying is going to be outdoor stuff. They're saying that's your average, that you use, that's a typical month for your household, whatever, whatever size it is. But I think this, what you're talking about is kind of mixing Roylton and winter rate. It's up to you as a council, why don't I bring back some samples?
I would want data for what it would look like imposing in a three-month average, January, February, March, the entire year and what it would look like charging that winter average only June, July, and August. Cause it's somehow, some ways you wanna impact the bottom line doing it one way or the other.
Yeah.
And we'd have to see the numbers to be able to determine if we wanna impose it the entire year or if we wanna impose it just during those summer months. Cause at the end of the day, we're just trying to make it fair for those that want to water their garden, yard, fill pools, wash cars. So, imposing it on the entire year, it may actually cost the city more money, possibly.
Oh, yeah.
And I, and I don't want that to happen, I just don't wanna penalize the folks in the summer that want to water their yards.
And I agree, I, I wanna be fair to them, but I don't wanna put us in through arrears and not being able to pay for our sewer.
Yeah, that's why I think having both, both sets of numbers would be good.
And that this is a significant, this is a significant change too. Um, I mean, when you implement that citywide, we, we're gonna see some shifting. Um, and then we are going to have to make adjustments to the bottom line cause the sewer fund still needs to generate enough. So, there is going to be a change and that's where we have a little bit of uncertainty with what the impact is going to be.
I am curious, I mean, this is for legal, do we have to impose it both on residential and industrial or can we impose this on just residential?
I think we can distinguish between residential and industrial, but it's just important that we do the same then for each class.
Sure.
All right, so we're gonna, excuse me, so we're gonna get some, uh, numbers at the July meeting and move forward from there. I'd like to thank everyone for coming tonight who wanted to speak on this. I had thought we were just doing a sprinkler ordinance, which I know is not gonna get passed, so I'm not even gonna bring that forward. And we'll go on to our next.
So, anybody wants to go meter for now, they can?
No. No.
So, they have to wait till next year?
Well, Gary-
But we'd actually make it more simple for them.
Because there's a legal issue with that where we're not certain everybody. We certainly don't want a legal issue, cause that'll cost us more money.
All right.
I don't have a sprinkler.
We'll go to Police Department reports, Katie McMillan.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, you received the stat report for the month of May. We had four hundred and twenty-five calls. Some factors of this is we did have T Z D enforcement for seatbelts. The detour is also a main factor. A lot of people are speeding coming into town, the county did put up the speed trailer for us. And so, and the stop signs are also part of that. Increased, um, calls at the school this last month, our SRO was extremely busy. Uh, medicals are up and it is getting nice out, so the kids are causing mischief and vandalizing at the parks. And the miscellaneous items, you can see that is higher, that is due to the tobacco and liquor license checks and regular records checks. That goes into that category. And a lot of extra patrols. People have been calling us a lot, asking for extra patrols for their street, for their neighborhood, for their house. And so, that goes into that part. We do remind people that please, if you see something, report it because we cannot be everywhere. Some, our event coming up is the bike rodeo, I am, that is on June seventeenth. I am looking for two council members to volunteer to come and draw names for the prize winners. Um, I request, ask them to be there about ten, or twelve forty-five, the drawing's at one. We have seventy-five kids pre-registered and walk-ups, that does not, we always get about probably forty or more walk-ups too. So, great number turnout. This year, the businesses and local organizations have been a great support for this event. Um, I have to make sure, but for sure, we have thirty bicycles to give away, so. That's awesome, um, I did get another large amount donation from Quanex the other day, so I have to look at seeing what we all have in place, so. Very thankful for everyone who has supported this event. Again, um, if you are able, um, let me know and again, twelve forty-five, Jeff, Brandon?
I'll be there, yeah.
Right, and if more wanna come, we can also post it as a possible quorum too. Just no city business can be conducted, but obviously you're having fun with kids, so there shouldn't be any city business. But, and that is all I have, unless you have something for me.
The squad issues that we're having?
I did take the squad car and the new squad, the twenty-one squad into K and K this morning for, or this afternoon for oil change. Um, I have been hearing some ticking sounds in the engine, they looked into it, they said, yeah, the lifters are, could be going out and it could cost, and then cause another issue. He continued to look into it for me and he said that, cause I was always told that if it's over thirty-six thousand miles, it's no longer covered under warranty. And he looked into it further and it is under warranty yet because it's a police package vehicle, so. Thankfully, we will be saving money on that. So, that is scheduled to go in Thursday after fund days. And the nineteen squad is plugging away, so got that new transmission in a few months ago, so.
Anything else for Katie? Thank you, City Engineer Jared Griffith.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor of City Council. Um, tonight I don't have much for you other than the update on twenty-three project. As you're well aware, they are moving forward with the project and continuing with the progress there. Still have some ditch cleanup and grading to do in the city limits of Foley. Uh, they're moving forward and making some good progress on the box culvert area. Uh, they actually do plan to pour curb this week, um, at the end of the week in that area and then pave that area plus the trail next week. And then moving forward, that's just, like I said, kind of the restoration and ditch cleanup in the city of Foley. Other than that, that's kinda all I have. Unless you have any questions for me.
Any questions for Jared? Thank you, Public Works, Mark Papenfuss.
Well, again, I don't, I'm gonna keep it short tonight, um, lot going on, of course, this is our busiest time. Pool should be good to go tomorrow. Maybe I'll put one of these on a budget too.
They don't share a lot.
Like I say, everything maintenance-wise looks to be up and running, we still got a little tweaking to do on the baby pool in the morning, but we should be good to go, so that's good. Besides the tuck pointing, we had no major expenses this year, so. Summer kids, I got three, meaning that we don't run those through consent, meaning they're part-time. One is full-time, whatever, quite, you know, four, four and a half days a week and two of them have balls, so they're gonna be like three days a week, so that's why I did three if you're wondering. So, they'll be helping us out. Other than that, I think the only thing is that Thirteenth Avenue Bridge, I know you guys got an email on that. We had the old bridge on the north side of Highway twenty-three. It was owned by the city, it was on private property on both sides, I don't think there was ever an agreement made up. Long story short, we're getting this fancy new trail, we should get it out of there, so that's why that was sent to you. We took, I had an opportunity to get it out from the contractors last week and they picked it, we set it on the county's semi and it's, it's here, but it's gone. Can I get rid of it? I mean, what, how do you want me to get rid of it? I would just soon get it out of here. I don't, it's not ADA compliant. I have a couple options, I don't, I'm talking to Sarah, I won't, um, being it's not ADA, ADA compliant, probably just best to not even deal with it here.
What's such, uh, would it be possible that Stoweville Club or any of those might be interested in it?
It's so narrow. It's not even the four feet or whatever for a four-wheeler wouldn't fit on it. Yeah, so that's why, I mean, it's one of those, I think, I might kick myself someday, but I, I think the best thing we could do is send it down, unless you wanna put it back in the weeds and talk about it in ten, fifteen, twenty years. You know, I mean, that's what we do, I mean, we've done it many times, not trying to be, you know.
Do you think we could sell it?
Oh, I'm sure you throw it on MinBID, somebody will take it for a hunk and jack or whatever, unless you wanna advertise it locally, I mean, MinBID. I gotta get the boom truck on MinBID, MinBID is why I, you know.
I'd say we try selling it, can always get rid of it other ways, but-
Absolutely.
I'm just thinking somebody might be interested.
Right. Yep, like a vehicle as is where it is, yeah.
Yeah, I, I am impartial, I, you try to sell it, I, if it doesn't sell, then get rid of it.
Yeah, and we'll scrap it all, it'll sell, you put it on there, you can't believe the stuff it sells on there. It might only be, you might only get a hundred dollars there.
Was it worth more in scrap?
I think we try selling it first.
Okay.
Other than that, like I say, yeah, and the new bridge, I say, will be paved in a week, hopefully, we haven't earned a lot of-
Is there a detour right now to get around that for pedestrians?
They can walk on the gravel trail.
Okay.
It's definitely, actually, this weekend cars were driving down it, so I had minned up the barricades up today on it, so they were cutting through there. So, yeah. Other than that, I don't think I have anything else much here, just got some specific-
Fire?
I don't think anything there.
We had something in our packet, do we have to?
That's in the consent agenda.
You approved it in the consent?
You already approved it.
Good news.
Yeah.
City Administrator Sarah Brun.
Okay, first thing, um, I would just like to request approval to utilize city funds for an employee picnic. We have not done anything for probably three, four years. I'd like to do something out at Holdridge where we could have, um, our full-time staff, our seasonal pool people, um, our seasonal parks people, fire even, all invited, um, just to hamburgers, hot dogs, simple. Is that okay? Any concerns with that with the council?
Do, do you need a motion for that or just approval?
I just wanna make sure you were aware that I'm doing it.
I'm okay with it.
Great, sounds very, sounds very good.
Okay, um, and if anybody wants to grill or something, let me know, cause I'm not very good at that, so. Second item, um, pool, like Mark said, opens tomorrow. We have a large staff, which is great. We had a really good turnout with applications this year. We were a little short on teachers, which has happened, um, just because there's not very many classes, but we are running a class here this weekend. I was able to get an agreement with a teacher to, to do that, so, um, we will have enough teachers to do our swimming lesson schedule. Um, we're actually looking at the possibility of adding even a few more classes based on the demand, so, great news there. Great group of youth too, I'm really excited for this season. One of the things we are going to try at the pool is a donation box. Being we've had such, uh, support for that and, and people seem to be interested in doing what they can to help out the pool. We are going to, we, we purchased a lock box, um, and we're going to just try that out and see, working with the manager and, um, what, how that goes, so. I'll keep you posted on that. I also wanna remind you, we have a meeting scheduled on June twentieth at two o'clock in the afternoon. That is for the audit report, we usually have it at this meeting, but because of the federal audit, they're having a little trouble getting that report done, um, just because of all the extra work that it requires, so. That will be at two o'clock and I am hoping, from what I have heard, everybody can make that. I think it's very important for everybody to be here, so we'll focus in on that item and try to limit our other discussions. Other than that, did I miss anything that I-
What do we come up with on Juneteenth? Are we closing the, closing her down or are we keeping it open?
We cannot conduct any city business, but we do need to have people available for fund days. So, we will post some communications that we can't do water bills, those type of things, but we'll only be available for assistance with the fund days activities, so. And that was a late change, in case anybody didn't know, that the omnibus bill included at the end was to make that retroactive. So, that's kinda why we got in that, bit of a pickle last minute, but yes, thank you for bringing that up, so. We'll do some posting, but, um, we will have people available, we cannot function without having some staff during that week, it's just a crazy week for us.
Good.
Anything else for me?
Anything else for-
Oh, then Ashley, you can cover the other item when he's, yeah.
City Attorney.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I got asked to speak tonight about an assessment discussion that has been arising between the school district and the city. As you may be aware, there was a pipe relocation in conjunction with the Highway twenty-three project that has been occurring. And now the question has occurred is, what, what about the cost? Who is gonna pay for this or how could we handle the cost for this? And especially, can we assess the school district for this cost? And the short answer is yes, we could assess the school district as a city for any cost associated. We could do it through, through the traditional four twenty-nine process where we'd look at the benefit incurred on the school district and do a public hearing and, um, do it that traditional route, or we could enter into assessment agreement, which I think is something that has been discussed previously between the city and the superintendent. I don't believe it's gone to an actual board meeting at this point between the school board.
Um, the, the concern is that the school board, um, the superintendent and attorney are of opinion that they are not responsible for costs for the storm sewer pipe. And I think it's somewhat of a legal, um, discussion with them too. And so, um, being that concern, we had initially agreed verbally on a fifty-fifty split, if you remember a couple of years ago. We are looking into alternative options because that is a significant bill otherwise for the city to absorb, so.
So, that is where we're at, I will be working with Sarah to reach out now to the superintendent to tell him that where our standing is and to see what we can do to move forward with that as well.
I am still under the assumption that the direction I was given before that we do want to work with the school and get that bill paid.
Yes, right, even if it's over the course of years, right?
Yep.
We talked about originally.
Yeah, and that's, that's what we proposed was a voluntary agreement to, you know, to split it up. You know, we're happy to work with the, another entity like that. But no payment is of concern to me, I, I just think they need to contribute to that. That was their pipe that we have, which is taking over for them, that was a courtesy we did to them, for them, so.
Is the superintendent still in place till?
Yep.
Till when?
End of June. So, I, I could communicate that, I just wanted to make sure that the council is okay with that and if you had any questions for the attorney on that process.
I'm good.
That's all I have, thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, old business, David, I think you already touched on it. Thank you, is there any other old business? New business?
Uh, just to comment, Mr. Mayor, that, uh, the groundbreaking ceremony was at New Life Church on Sunday and, uh, very positive feedback from both the church and the architect working with us. He said they, it was a pleasure to work with us on this project, so. He said they, it was a pleasure to work with us on this project, so good job by everyone.
Any other new business? Anyone to speak at the open forum?
Uh, yeah, one more comment, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
With the, moving forward with the sprinkler sewer, let's make sure that we do not hurt business. So, when going with this winter rates, I don't wanna go, Mark, you said, um, I said something about summer rates. We don't wanna hurt business. It's not my intention, so just to clarify that.
So, so we wanna look at specifically a residential level.
We wanna help our business as much as possible, especially in this state when they're not business-friendly. That's my opinion, so.
Any other? If not, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All four say aye.
Aye.
Pause.
Motion or medians adjourned.
Any Friday. Fridays are the best.
Friday for me.